Calling the meeting to order at six o'clock PM. This is the Board of Directors' regular school board meeting for Monday, February 27, 2023. Welcome to all of our visitors, guests, and media. We're going to start tonight with the Board and Administration roll calls. Mr. Felth, here. Mr. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Danielson?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Nate?
Here.
Mr. O'Neal?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Ms. O'Connell?
Here.
Ms. Gronseth?
Here.
Mr. Vio?
Here.
Mr. Samansky?
Here.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is public comments, but we have not received any tonight. So now we are on to the first action item, a motion to approve the agenda and addendums.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Mr. O'Neal. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item three, the consent agenda, which includes the school board minutes for the regular school board meeting on January 23, 2023, the personnel consent agenda, and the business consent agenda.
Overapproval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Ms. Danielson. Any further discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carried. Now on to the recognition presentations and showcases. Got a busy, busy month, so we are going to start with Ms. Brandonberg and the students for I Love to Read Month.
The students will be joining me in this. Thank you very much for having me here tonight with some first grade readers that I brought along with me for this evening's presentation. February is always an exciting month at the elementary school, and a lot of that is due to I Love to Read Month, and this year, as our first picture shows, it has to do with camping this year. So our theme this year was Camp Read a Lot. So our first encouragement as far as students during February is to read. So from a generous donation, all these things were possible from our Watertown Elementary PTO, and they helped us purchase numerous books that we were able to put in each classroom based upon the theme of camping, outdoors, and adventure, and even Bigfoot. We celebrated many dress-up days this month, each on a Friday. We had students dress in their camp colors. On the 3rd, on the 10th, it was a happy camper, so dressing for an adventure. So it was each their own as to what an adventure meant to them. On the 17th, camp critters, so many students brought little stuffed animals to read with them during the day on the 17th. And on the 24th, coming off our snow day, was a pajama day for Camp Read, so it was very fitting for our students. As I said, one of our special guests or visitors to the building was Bigfoot Bill. So Bigfoot Bill here, you can see someone in the center, and Bigfoot Bill would hide around the building each day for the students to try to look for him as another exciting part of our month, and they will send in photos each day of kids finding him around the building. And he is leaving us tomorrow, as it is the last day of February, but he might reappear for our Strides for Students Silent Auction item. Another great community part of this is we always do our food drive during this time as well, so we're doing a Hunt Off Hunger food drive. It runs through the end of this week to support our community food shelf here in Watertown. We're collecting items and also monetary donations to support our food shelf. We're encouraging our students to write and illustrate stories about adventures. And this year in art, each student received a river rock and supplies to create kindness rocks and design rocks so that we can make a dry river in our school, and they're all sealed, so they will last for many years to come. So once the snow goes away, we'll be able to create a dry river where students can come, walk along the river, and reflect upon each other's artwork from this year. Tomorrow night, we had to postpone our previous week's family night to this week, to tomorrow, so if you're interested in coming, we'd love to have you come check it out. We're having Camp Read a Lot from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. There will be events in the lunchroom and then also both sides of the gymnasium. And in the lunchroom, there'll be Camping Bingo and a Make Your Own Trail mix bar with donations, again, from our community and our PTO. And then in the one gym, we're going to have different academic stations, a STEM activity, a math, a reading activity, some reading, some books to check out, and some Make Your Own Camping lanterns, which then the students can take over to the other side of the gym, where we're going to have a virtual bonfire and some other things where they can camp out and read their books. They can bring a camp, a camp chair, a blanket, and read by our virtual campfire. So I invite you all to come check it out tomorrow night. And I also, as I said, brought some first grade guest readers with me, so I'd like them to invite them up at this time. You could introduce yourself, just say your first name.
Alvin.
Maggie.
Tommy.
Claire.
Bill.
And these are students from all of our first grade classrooms here at Watertown Elementary School. So what we have for you today, it is very short stories to read together, and the students and I have practiced, they'll be reading what's in yellow. We'll all be reading together what's in orange, and you, the board, will be reading what is in pink. So we will be coral reading, taking turns so that we can all read together to celebrate I Love to Read Month. Okay? The first story is titled "The Two Mice." Are you friends? Okay.
I see a mouse.
I see one, too.
We see two mice.
What shall we do?
Let's give them names.
What shall they be?
Pipe and beep.
He and she.
Dot and dash.
Squeal and squeak.
Toe and twirl.
Hide and seek.
Two mice are nice.
Two mice are fun.
They're twice as nice.
As only one.
And when we read.
It's just the same.
Two readers reading.
Make a game.
It's twice as nice.
When there are two. You read to me, I'll read to you.
The second story we have tonight is "The Big Cat."
Oh my, I spy a great big cat.
A great big cat? I don't like that.
Run, mice, run.
Stay, cat, stay. Oh, good, the mice have got away. Now, pussycat, that isn't nice. You shouldn't scare the little mice.
We know, we know you want them for your food. Eating mice is really rude.
It's not a proper thing to do. Why, what if someone gobbled you?
Think how sad your friends will feel if you were eaten for a meal.
We'll give you cream, your very own, if you will leave the mice alone.
And when you're done and full and fat, we'll find a book about a cat.
A cat like you with fluffy fur who laps up cream and loves to purr.
And lives inside a little house and never ever dies of a mouse.
We both will read the book to you. The mice can sit and listen to.
And our final story for today. Parents, if you'd like to come up.
Come up here, yeah. It's easier for pictures up here.
Yeah. All right, and our final story, which we thought was fitting, is "The Snowman."
Hi-ho, hi-ho, the world is white.
Hi-ho, hi-ho, it snowed last night.
It snowed while we were fast asleep.
It's nice and high, it's very deep.
Put on your clothes, it wasn't for snow.
Pull on your boots and then let's go.
What shall we do, the first of all?
Let's build a snowman, roll a ball.
I'll roll the bottom on the ground.
I'll make the middle nice and round.
I'll find a pebble for each eye.
And if he starts to melt, he'll cry.
His mouth can be an apple slice.
An apple slice will turn to ice.
I'm getting pretty icy, too.
You do look icy.
So do you.
Let's go inside and get a drink.
Some cocoa will be good, I think.
And while we're in, what shall we do? You read to me, I'll read to you.
Thank you so much for reading to us and having a joint.
So again, just another pitch to have you come check it out tomorrow night to camp out with us with a good book in February, so thank you for your time and allowing us to come and read with you tonight. Thank you. That was awesome. Bye, guys.
And next up is the Parliamentary Procedure Team. Ms. Mizraaka.
Well, this is the BPA Parliamentary Procedures Team. I'm going to move this over a little bit. So we have Claire Brandonberg, Logan Benberg, Justin Kine, Jonah Hamburger, Lindsay Penagor, Ava Hewen, and Eric Costello. These guys, this is their second year being a Parliamentary Procedure Team together with all of them. Last year, they went to Nationals and they were sixth place, sixth place. They're hoping to make it to Nationals again this year. We think that they'll do really well at state. They're competing at state next week. To give you a taste of what it looks like when they're going in and competing, their normal competition has three parts and takes about 15 minutes to present. They're going to do just one part, so you get just a small glimpse of what they're doing. Russ Runk has been a coach for us for how many years? Many, many years.
More than 20.
Yeah, a very long time. He's been coaching our Parliamentary Procedures Teams. I was going to have him just tell you a little bit about what they're doing.
And I appreciate the chance to come before the school board and before the community. It's a huge honor to always come back. I was an act teacher here for 12 years and then had the opportunity to switch over to BPA and have been working with them ever since. And what I've learned a lot about parliamentary procedure is the chance to work with young people and to teach them about rule of the majority, rights of the minority, one thing at a time, and above all, be fair and courteous to all concerned, no matter what we're talking about. And I think those rules apply to all of us, every one of us every day. And so I get to work with young people and see them learn and grow and make me laugh every morning because I tell them if you don't make me laugh, I quit. It always makes me laugh. So Harley gets us a chance to work on prepared public speaking. You're not going to see much of that today. Then there is the knowledge of parliamentary law, and they can throw in BPA, they can throw Robert's Rules of Order at us. Have you ever seen that book? It's very thick. And so they have to learn to think on their feet, have a high level of knowledge, and then apply it, and that's the highest level of learning that you can let a young person experience. So with that said, they're just going to cut right to the opening ceremony, BPA pledge, and then they've got their problem, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Will members please rise and join me in sitting while we're here?
We are met in a spirit of friendship and goodwill as we prepare for careers in a world-class workforce. We work together to develop professionalism and leadership through business professionalism America and pledge our loyalty to our nation.
Please be seated. Madam Secretary, what is the first item of business?
Mr. President, the first item of business is to visit state legislation during sessions.
Members, you've heard the first item of business. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Lindsay.
I move to visit state legislator, legislator during session.
The motion to visit state legislator during session has been moved and seconded. It is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. Lindsay, as maker of the motion, you have the first right to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I strongly agree with this motion because I believe that it is super important for our Harley team to see a real-life team in action.
Mr. President. The Chair recognizes Logan.
I speak in favor of this motion as well because seeing the state legislature in session would let us see what actual professionals doing this job would be like and also see the applications of parliamentary procedures in the real world.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Claire.
I do not think this would be good due to the fact that I was just at the Capitol for a CTE day with our BPA state officers.
Mr. President. The Chair recognizes Ava.
As the treasurer of this group, looking at our finances right now, I just do not think this is the best idea. Looking at travel fees, I think our money is best used somewhere else.
Mr. President. The Chair recognizes Jonah.
Hearing that from Ava, I believe that is, it also would be a waste of our money at this time.
Mr. President. The Chair recognizes Justin.
I rise to a point of information.
Please state your point of information.
How much does it cost to go on this, to visit the state legislature?
Does the maker of the motion have the answer to this question?
It would cost about $15 per person.
$15 per person, thank you.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Justin.
I rise to a parliamentary inquiry.
Please state your parliamentary inquiry.
What kind of vote does a limited debate motion require?
Does the parliamentary have an answer to this question?
Motion to limit debate requires a two-thirds majority.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Jonah.
I feel that with only $15 per person, that's a complete waste of our money as we have Nationals and state coming up. It would be much better to use that $15 for those competitions.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Claire.
I agree with Jonah and completely disagree with this motion due to the fact that BPA is hosting our event, BPA Cares and Shares, where we can be giving back to local homeless shelters in Minneapolis, and we should put that $15 toward this event.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Logan.
I move to limit debate to one more speech total.
Second. The motion to limit debate to one more speech total has been moved and seconded. It is not debatable, amendable, and requires a two-third vote. Are there any amendments? All in favor of having one more speech total, please rise. Thank you. All against, please rise. Thank you. With five of the affirmative and one of the negative, the ayes have it. Motion is adopted. There will now be one more speech total.
Mr. President.
The Chair recognizes Ava.
Backing my point once again, we only have $1,000 in our account right now, and looking at state and national expenses, we are already going to have to be fundraising and doing a bunch of other things to obtain this money. I just do not think this is the best idea at this time.
All in favor of visiting state legislator during session, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called. All in favor, please rise. Thank you. All against, please rise. Thank you. With four in the affirmative and two in the negative, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Madam Secretary, what is the next item of business?
Mr. President, there are none, none on our agenda today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. Good job, guys. That was awesome. Very well done. Good luck at state next week.
Lock owner.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Can we speed it up a little bit to be that quick?
Yeah, right? That would be nice.
All right, Hunter, there's your challenge. Let's go. I'm still not sure what I just said. Just going to limit debate on every motion, that's all. Well, thank you, Chair Felth, for the opportunity to speak tonight. This is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, as you may well know, and I have a quick proclamation I'd like to recite, and then we have some certificates for our board members tonight. So whereas the Watertown Mayor Public School Community recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas the Watertown Mayor Public School Community appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient and effective school system, and whereas the school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and their control of our public schools, and whereas the school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal governments and ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, and whereas the school board members selflessly devote their knowledge, time, and talents and advocate for our schoolchildren, whereas the local school board members are strong advocates for public education and responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations of the district. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Watertown Mayor Public Schools recognizes and salutes the members of the Watertown Mayor School Board and proclaiming February 2023 as School Board Recognition Month. Thank you very much for your service, and again, we have some very nice, suitable for framing certificates for you. Mr. Felth, thank you so much for your service.
Drop the mic. Yeah, mic drop on that one. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Hewen, thank you for all the social media posts. It was fun to see all the old school board.
You guys did great. I had to knock down a couple doors, but that's okay. I'm consistent.
Moving on to action item A, acknowledgement of donations, contributions, and fundraising. Mr. Schuler.
Yes, Bor, we are trying, Chair Felth, we are moving to a different process when acknowledging our donations, contributions, and fundraising efforts. Ms. Hewen, in her excellent work as an investigator in our officer training, found that we probably should be doing a better job of acknowledging and recognizing those donations. And with that being said, as you can see, the list of donations from the past month are listed, and at this time, I would ask Mr. Felth to read those donors and where the donations have gone to within the district, okay?
And so, moving forward, this is going to be a standard action item. Every month, we have donations. Removing it from the consent agenda to an action item. And on behalf of the school district, the public school district, you know, we greatly accept these donations pending our board approval tonight. And those donations are from the Mayor Baseball Club LLC for drama, the Larry Burry Memorial for FFA, Ovation Orthodontics, Marketplace Foods, Mayor Lumber Company, Watertown Dental, and the Watertown Boy Scouts, all for robotics, Kelly Skogan for the middle school band, American Legion 121 for both the German and Spanish trips, Trinity Lutheran Church for the Royals Room, and Ryan Truckee for baseball. So with those donations being this month, is there a motion to accept the donations?
I make a motion to accept these donations.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Mr. Burns. Any further discussion on the donations? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries, and thank you to everyone for donating to the district.
Awesome, thank you.
Next up, item B, first and only read of district policies requiring annual review. Superintendent Schuler.
Yeah, we have one policy that we're bringing back for a one and only read. This policy did come to you earlier, I'm actually back last month, as a one and only, but we had to go back and do some changes, and if I will click on this policy just to explain that in a little bit more detail. What we've done, as you can see, is we've taken, again, through some of the fine work by Mrs. Hewen, in identifying what truly are board committees. The four identified, four board committees are Finance Committee, the Facilities, which is our BAC committee, the Personnel, and the Policy Committee. So those are the ones that we are required to have minutes from and post those minutes as well, and obviously, each of you are assigned to one of those more or less. The last five are certainly policies and, or, excuse me, committees, and you are assigned to those as well, but the four that we're responsible for per MSBA are the four that you see there. So we're just going back in and changing that.
Just a question on that. So the Policy Committee, because we don't typically meet to discuss that, does that mean now that we will have to have meetings in order to discuss?
Yeah, we're looking at that as just even a virtual meeting potentially so that we can walk you through those. I know now we're sending them out for your review.
Right.
This would be more of a formal meeting and discussion. Thank you, yes, and they are public as well, all these meetings.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the first and only read of the school board committee's policy.
A second.
We have a motion made by Ms. We have a motion made by Mr. Felth, seconded by Ms. Nathan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item C, second read of district policies requiring review. Superintendent Schuler.
Uh, the second, uh, read of the policies, um, are all policies that we brought last month that we took back for some additional clarification. Uh, we've do, we've done our due diligence at this point. They've kind of met the sniff test, if you will, for what we need them to do, uh, moving forward. And, uh, so at this time, we're asking for a, uh, approval of the second read of the following policies.
I just had a few questions. Um, so on policy 524, um, I think it's, it looks like nine, section nine, the Internet Use Agreement. I see that it's highlighted in purple. Does that, is that highlighted in purple for a reason? Does that mean that we have an agreement form? Or we need to create an agreement form going forward in regard to Internet use?
Yes, we currently do have that, uh, form. So when you do go online, through campus, you should be able to see that now. That'll be something that you sign off on.
Purple is what was developed by our technology group and was current in implementation. It isn't necessarily what MSBA has, but it's in line with the MSBA policy based on our current practices.
Got it.
So this is student and, um, staff as well, need to sign off on this, that they're using our equipment. And we do have those rights, um, as well as the employer.
Okay, and then I think, was it... I think it was also in this one, and I didn't write down where it is exactly, maybe it's... It has to do with the technology provider. I think it was, oh, yes. Section thirteen C, the, within the thirty days of the start of each school year, the school district must give parents and students direct and timely notice, um, regarding, or, you know, a form of communication regarding testing or assessment. Cause I don't, I know that you guys always kind of tell us when we're doing testing. But I didn't know if we were going so far as to, you know, like, talk about where their data is going or how that's being used.
Yeah, the, um, we, what we've created this past year is more of a database for all the, um, third-party providers that we get our services from. So Brittany and Dustin on the tech side have created a comprehensive list, and I could probably conclude that at a certain time. Uh, but just basically listing everybody that worked for and some of the, the, that we provide with or for. So it's a really nice comprehensive document that was per legislation that we have to provide that now. So any parent can go on and see exactly, um, what companies we're using and how they're using the data.
Okay, so that's not something that we have to, like, push out? Cause that's kind of how I read it, is that...
I think we did. We do, yeah.
That they push out these are the technology, things that we're using, these are the makers. They have a very comprehensive spreadsheet of what is doing what. It was on the website for a while, but then after clarification, they pulled it, and now it goes out to families. And if they have questions about what's being used, we have that as a resource, but it's not necessary to put on the public website.
Sure, okay.
It doesn't help with hacking purposes, is from what I understood.
Understood. Um, and then, I think the only other question I had was in regard to, um, policy 410, the Family Medical Leave Act, um, where it said that the poster has to be, like, um... Was it, like, conspicuously, like, placed in the building?
We do. So basically, every copy room across the district, so in the four different buildings, in the copy room, we list all those federal regulations.
Got it.
And so they're pretty easy to see, visible, out and about, yeah.
Okay, I just was curious if we actually, cause I'm like, now I wanna hunt, like, like the Bigfoot, hunt for these, like, conspicuous...
I have to get every year. I have to have new copies every year, and then I distribute them to each of the buildings.
Sure.
And then they are posted.
Okay, alright. That concludes my questions.
Second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Burns, seconded by Mr. Onell. Any further discussion on the second read of the policies? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next up, item D, resolution for boys lacrosse co-op with Mound West Tonka.
Yes, as, um, Mr. Chair, as we talked last month, um, we had some discussion regarding, um, boys lacrosse. And, uh, Mr. Samansky is back to give us an update on exactly where we're at, at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Schulz. Um, Mound West Tonka has officially invited us. They passed a resolution at their board meeting in early February saying that they're open to the co-op possibilities. Uh, just a couple of items, kind of in general, about the lacrosse. Lacrosse, as I mentioned before, it's one classification, so we're not worried about a co-op being formed and then pushing us over into double A or single A and that sort of stuff. Right now, it's just one classification. Uh, we did have a number of, of boys express interest in it early. And now, as we're getting closer and closer, when the rubber hits the road, that's waned a little bit, but there still is some interest. Um, but that's, that's where we're at as of right now. The current level of interest in just having some conversations, back and forth emails, right now, we've got one young man who's very interested in being a lacrosse player. And I believe he's a ninth grader this year. So it's, it kind of puts us in a very difficult, uh, position in the sense of, we want to provide opportunities, we want to be wise with our opportunities. And in a situation like this, one of the things that we take a look at is, okay, logistically, can we pull this off, and what will the expense be for the district? Um, in talking with Mound, they have got a great deal for us. Jeff told me that, Jeff, their AD is, this is a self-funded program, which means, uh, it's different than the, the way we operate our co-ops, um, at Watertown Mayor. What they do is, at the end of the year, the district bills back the individual parents or the individual families that are involved in lacrosse, and they pay the expenses for it. So it's kind of one of those situations where they got a deal for us, and it's not gonna cost us anything right now. So there is a possibility where we do go along with this co-op, form this co-op, and we provide an opportunity for our students. And who knows, right now, it's one. It might be five when it actually gets going. It might grow a little bit later on. And the current makeup, the current structure of the program is, the, the parents, the families are billed for that expense. So that's the way the structure is as of right now. Um, I know in talking to, um, the parent involved in here, um, hey, are you really willing to do this? And they responded with, yep, that's, uh, something we'd enjoy doing. Uh, to give you an idea of cost, it's nothing compared to hockey costs, so be careful with that. It's not the same as hockey. It could range anywhere from the three hundred on the low end to six fifty, seven hundred on the high end. Now, they asked me not to quote them on that, but that's kind of the range that they were, were looking at. And going in the first year, we're hoping it falls in that range. It might not. It could be on the lower side. It could be on the higher side. We just don't know as of yet.
What all is included in that cost? Like, what is that, what does that all pay for? Just like busing, transportation?
Transportation.
Coaching?
And coaching mainly.
Okay.
Lacrosse is very similar to hockey, um, which is the opposite of football, and I'll explain that. You know, in football, we purchase the helmet as a district. We purchase the shoulder pads as a district. Hockey's a little bit different. They purchase a lot of their equipment on their own. Their breezers, their, their shoulder pads, all of that stuff. They buy that on their own. Um, lacrosse is very similar in that regard as hockey. They buy their own equipment. They get their helmet, and they keep their helmet until they can't use it anymore. They got their sticks and, and that sort of stuff. So there's not really a lot of equipment expenses. There's some incidentals, game balls and that sort of stuff, practice balls, nets, that. But really, for the most part, it's, uh, transportation and coaching.
And remind me again, is it a two- or three-year agreement with co-ops?
When you start a co-op, it's a two-year agreement.
Okay.
And again, we could send them athletes year one and send them no athletes year two. It's, you know, there's no penalty or anything that way. We've got a co-op with Mayor Lutheran in wrestling, and I don't believe they, you know, they've shared any, any wrestlers with us in, in a number of years. And the co-op is still there, so.
And how does that, the parent funding versus district funding? Like, if next year, you know, what, what's that timeframe where we will know if that parent funded is no longer an option?
Um, right now, they're still in the parent funding stage. Uh, I believe that, I'm not exactly sure what timeframe they're at. But that's one of the, uh, policy, or one of the procedures that they have as far as if you would like to start a new sport at Mound. The first thing you need to do is go through this process.
So it's a Mound policy?
It's a Mound, yes. It's a Mound policy. I know for sure that, that's what it will be for this year. Now, next year, I mean, they didn't anticipate any changes for next year, but there is a possibility it does change.
So it's something we have to keep tabs on, too?
Yes.
And there are currently no other schools looking to co-op together for this, right? It's just us and Mound West Tonka?
I don't believe so. They've had some turnover in that, um, I believe with Southwest Christian, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But right now, um, it would be us and Mound West Tonka.
And this, I mean, I don't know, but is it even between boys and girls sports then? Like, do we have, do we have to have, like, for that Title IX stuff, equal opportunities?
With the Title IX, um, the number of sports, that's part of what they look at. It's not the number one thing. It's, but that is a factor. I'd have to think of, I'd have to add up, um, exactly where we're at with that, so.
Any other questions from Mr. Samansky?
Nope. I'll make a motion to approve the co-op for boys lacrosse with Mound West Tonka for the next two years, I guess.
I'll second.
Motion made by Ms. Danielson, seconded by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. Um, on to the review and information items. Mr. Vogel is obviously not here today, uh, so we're gonna stumble through the presentation between me, Darren, and, uh, Jim.
I think the first slide, um, he was covering, uh, just again, where we're at with our punch list items. Um, the warranty claim are, is in process for the flooring and the tile concerns that we've had. So that is still ongoing. Uh, I think we're making some progress, um, from my understanding, which is good. Uh, there's nine open items remaining in terms of punch list things that need to be, uh, completed, and those are obviously being tracked, uh, by our BAC committee as well, so things are, are starting to, to wrap up. The one piece I don't know if you mentioned on here is the locker room piece. I know, is on the next slide? Thank you. So again, the middle school and pool locker rooms contractor, uh, is to complete the painting and final punch list this week. Um, again, we're looking at some alternative bids for epoxy floor repairs, and that would hopefully be completed over the spring break timeframe. Um, the final, the, the back to the walls, I know he's had a contractor in last week to do some work, um, just to give us a general sense of what it would look like, um, to, with the repairs that they were making. Um, and we're pretty satisfied with where we're at, at this point, with those repairs. Um, now would be a, a, a final paint job, um, to complete that. So I know he'll update the BAC on Wednesday before we proceed any further. Um, probably a walkthrough there as well to see some of the, the updated fixes that have been completed. So, um, again, we'll do that on Wednesday. Uh, also, I know Chris was excited to bring forth some of the information on our greenhouse and storage facility, um, as we're getting hopefully close to spring here, and we can start, uh, the next phase of construction. So, um, again, the, the greenhouse that we're purchasing, A.G. Lawer is the contractor. It's a thirty-by-fifty greenhouse, uh, along with a thirty-by-fifty storage facility that we recently got, um, permission, um, through the variance process at the city level. The council just approved that on the fourteenth to move forward. So all systems are, are moving forward there, so that was a, a nice hurdle to, to get through. Um, as you mentioned, we're currently in the final design review of the building and the permit phase with the city of Watertown. And again, that approved variance, like I mentioned, um, to allow for an all-metal, uh, building and roof. Again, if you remember, that was where we were hung up a little bit. We asked the city for an all-metal, um, building essentially. So, um, moving forward with that. Again, like I mentioned, late spring, early summer construction is our timeframe. So here you can see, um, kind of a rough draft of where that is going to, to sit. Greenhouse, and then the, the shed. Again, um, you can see the turnaround that we completed this past summer, widening that area, uh, here with the access for food deliveries. And again, uh, the, the area you can see here, um, is all gonna be class five gravel around the greenhouse at this time, and shed. I don't, Mr. Burns, Mr. Felth, anything to add to that?
Shed is gonna be on the left, greenhouse is on the right, correct?
Yeah, the end-to-end, about ten feet apart. And just for orientation, this is on the north side of the building along Cory Avenue, behind the Citi area.
So will entrances to either building be from the outside?
From the end and from the center. Yes, and Darren, if you go to, maybe the next slide.
The next slide will be the...
So this is the pole shed, so the west end will be a ten-by-ten overhead door. East end will be a, I think it's an eight-by-eight overhead door that'll go into the door of the greenhouse. So this will be used for, you know, storage for greenhouse-related stuff. I would imagine they'll probably do some of their potting and things like that in here, and then there'll be a concrete walkway into the greenhouse that they'll be able to, you know, roll carts in or whatever to access the greenhouse. So that's some visuals of what the shed will look like. Color-wise, those are pretty accurate representations of what that'll look like. And then this is the general greenhouse, so double walk doors on both ends of the greenhouse. Um, again, allowing access from the shed or for the public coming in. Uh, that will have an ADA sidewalk going out to the asphalt, so it'll be easy access to get in and out.
Is there a reason why it's green and not blue? Just curious.
Uh, we just thought it would blend in with the surroundings a little bit better.
Okay.
Yeah, and kind of match the other buildings.
Okay.
Um, so this is some examples of some of the greenhouses that we've toured or other ones that we've seen. So the one on the left with the double door, that's roughly what our doors will look like. The ours will be a little bit taller than that, but that gives a general idea. Maybe go to the next slide, Darren. Yeah, so here's some examples of what they look like on the inside when they're actually in use. Uh, this is west central areas, a brand-new greenhouse. They just had the, uh, the opening ceremonies on it last week in the snowstorm, so. Yeah, they had a foot of snow outside, and they're in the greenhouse, uh, potting plants, so that's...
Kids will wanna be there.
That's why you build a greenhouse.
Their flooring on this one, is that all concrete?
They've got all concrete in theirs, yeah, yeah. So what we're doing with ours will be, uh, I think it's an eight-foot wide sidewalk down the middle of the greenhouse. You again? With, uh, what's called trap rock on both sides, so it'll be rock to allow for better drainage. So we toured several facilities, some had full concrete and some had trap rock, and we just kind of decided that trap rock would be a little better solution, a little bit easier to clean, a little easier for drainage.
And watering system through the whole thing? Yeah?
Yeah, so we didn't buy the watering system. Uh, we bought the controller and all the electronics to go with it. Uh, but that'll actually be one of the greenhouse management classes for his projects will be to install the watering system. So they'll do, like, you see the hanging plants on the top there that has a drip system in it?
Yep.
And then there'll, they probably, I don't know if they'll do a spray system much, just because of the variety in the greenhouse, if it makes sense to do that or not, but, yeah, we, most of the ones we toured, the egg teachers all said, yeah, we had the students build the watering system.
Cool, that is a good idea.
As part of the project, so. And it'll have all, um, so full state-of-the-art controls, all remote monitoring and management. Uh, so the egg teacher doesn't necessarily have to show up on a Saturday to check on the greenhouse. He can monitor all that remotely, um, and all that stuff will be built in, so.
Do the sides all come up?
Uh, so there's vents in the eaves, and then there are also vents on the upper portion of the walls on the sides that open. And those are all automated. The system manages itself. Yeah, but it will open those, the vents, and there's also a shade system. Cause they get way too hot in the summertime and even late spring. Uh, you can see it on the left picture on the top, kind of the light.
Yep.
Um, that's a shade system, so we'll have the exact same thing. So the, the monitoring system will, you'll set a... So the monitoring system will, you'll set a temperature and it'll open the vents, it'll close the shades, it'll turn on the heat or whatever it needs to do to maintain town.
So we spared no expense here.
This would be a very, very nice greenhouse.
This will be pretty impressive, yeah.
But that's one thing through all of the projects, if we're going to do it.
Right, yes, absolutely. Yes.
I've toured a lot of greenhouses in Minnesota. I'll, I don't want to go on record and say this, but I'll bet ours will be in the top 10 in the state for high school greenhouses.
And will it include all of these, like, tables and things like that?
Yep, so we bought the tables with A.J. Lauer as well. They've got a really nice fully aluminum folding table that works really, really well. Some schools built their own, that kind of thing, but those, they don't fold as well. They don't stack. These are great because they're foldable, they stack, you can move them off to the side if he's got something that he needs a little more space for, or they can set up all the tables. We actually got a donation from Cargill to cover, cover the tables, so.
Mr. Schuler, do you know, are they already building in classes, like is Mr. Henin, or are there already classes available?
Yep. So we've offered a plant science class for years. That has been desperately needing this facility.
Got it.
So that, I think that class is this spring.
Yeah, that was, we were hoping obviously to be in there this spring. Our goal was to build this in the fall, if you recall, and try to get some of that work done so they could run classes this spring. Unfortunately, we're not going to do that. But yeah, as the new catalog is being completed, registration, yeah, that is on tap for next spring or next fall.
Sure, I would assume they could run it year round now if they wanted to. I mean theoretically.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, and using it more than just high school too, with the middle school right there too. They have classes out there as well.
Sure. Good point.
And lastly, just a quick budget update. As you can see on the bottom right hand corner, we are, we're getting down there in terms of cost of completion as these projects are starting to wind down. This is our last big one, so.
Awesome.
Any questions for Mr. Vogel?
Down, ask him next morning.
Glad to pass them along.
No.
No, anything else from us? Again, thank you to the BAC and Jeff's been now a part of that as well. And excited to see this last phase completed.
Alrighty, moving on to item B, strategic plan update. Mr. Schuler, again.
I don't have a lot to report, other than where we left last time. I believe I shared our infographic with you in regards to our plan. So again, our goal here is to list our strategic commitments on the left hand side, as you can see that we developed. And then those benchmarks are going to be built in alongside here on the right hand side. Our marketing communications committee was scheduled to meet tomorrow night. Unfortunately, we had some folks that are not able to attend, so we're going to have to adjust. Our goal for that meeting was to see the new, newest and greatest design. Mrs. Behrens, who is on that committee, was working on that behind the scenes. We haven't even seen it, so we were pretty excited too to see what she has come up with. As you recall, Robin did the work with the profile of a graduate previously, so she kind of gets the model that we want. This is actually a very nice design as well, but Robin has the ability to take it to that next level. So the timing didn't work out to show you at this meeting, but we're continuing to move forward with that final design to bring back to the board. In addition to that, we're also working on the profile of a graduate work. Mr. Henin and Mrs. Jen Pepperdittis and Mrs. Fiskus have been meeting with the different staffs in each building to get feedback. So they've been taking that to the high school staff, the middle school staff, now they're getting out to the elementary and the CLC, just again, to share what's been already shared and then to get feedback on what's missing currently in our, excuse me, in our profile of a graduate. So again, that'll be embedded into this document, which is exciting, I think, for all of us to see that kind of baked into this as well. So we'll have two really good complimentary documents when it's all done. I should also say, we're also bringing to our parent group, and then lastly, the Chamber of Commerce, I think on the February, excuse me, March 13th meeting, we want some of the chamber members who are business owners to get a glance at it as well to say, hey, these are some things you need to consider when you're finalizing this from business owner standpoints. These are the type of skills we want kids to be leaving the high school with. So yeah, we're excited to see what kind of feedback we're going to get from that group as well. So that's the update there.
So are you feeling that the final version of that will be brought to the board on March?
I'm hopeful, but I'm not really optimistic. That might be, you know, depending on Robin's, where that committee's at, because we want that committee to kind of either rubber stamp, if you will, to say, move it forward to the board for the final approval. So could it be possibly, but I would have to say April's probably more realistic. Our plan then would be to hopefully, once approved, as teachers start to wrap up our school year in May, I would like to get out to each of the staffs too and explain kind of what the product looks like and how we're going to build that into next school year so they can leave for the summer with some ideas on, again, how this looks going forward. So yeah, it's exciting. It's exciting work and it's fun, and I, like I said, we're excited to see what Robin comes up with for that final design.
And then we give us an extra month to try to figure out tracking metrics and stuff on the 1-3-8 as well.
Yep. Any other questions?
Moving on to the admin reports, Mr. Henin and Ms. We're not here, so we have Mr. Schuler in their stead.
Yeah, so bear with me, you're going to hear some reports here. Mr. Henin and Mr. Gerton are at conferences tonight, so I gave them permission to stay back and be able to connect with parents and students. So Mr. Henin's report, I'll read this, and again, bear with me. Registration for the 23-24 school years underway. We've completed working with our current eighth graders. We had a parent meeting with about 50 to 60 parents who attended as well as to answer any questions. Students did a great job of asking questions and being engaged in the process. Also, our current ninth through 11th graders are currently in the early stages of the registration process. We met with each grade level last week. We are also holding parent meetings tonight for each grade level if they would like to find out more information. The hope is to be done with collecting information from students by March 6th, and then we can begin the planning for the 23-24 school year. Student requests play a large role in the determination of what classes are offered. Also, graduation is coming soon, and he is planning for graduation. We're getting the process of determining the logistics. The one topic again is hosting the event on the football field, and I think he mentioned to that to the board at one point here earlier in the year, and what we need to do to make that happen. At the same time, we're making sure we have a suitable backup plan if that direction is what we decide to go with, as we know May can be a rainy month at times, unpredictable. He'll be meeting with various student groups to get input on this idea. The goal is to have a decision by May 1st, whether it be on the field or not. Also, it's a busy time of the year. A lot of activities are wrapping up. It's end of the season for the winter sports activities. You've probably seen some of the successes that we've had, and he'll summarize those in a future meeting. Tuesday though, he notes that there's a large group choir concert at the high school, and also conference speech meeting starting at 3:00 PM. It's a bit challenging, but we're hosting a boys basketball game that same night. A huge thanks to all the staff members, it's a pretty big part of the building to make those events happen when you have so many things going on, and a lot of different schools being in our spaces as well, which is exciting. Mock trial and BPA, as you saw, tonight have their state competitions coming up as well. And spring and sports activities are right around the corner, so that's Mr. Henin's report. Transition to Mr. Gerton's report. He's also transition planning for the 23-24 school year. A lot of work is being done in March here, starting to prepare for that school year, next school year. He's recruiting Web Where I Belong mentors, eighth grade mentors for next year. Those are current seventh graders, of course, and we're supporting our incoming fifth graders with the Web Leaders, so they'll be doing that as they come in. Middle school band and choir perform at the elementary for fourth graders to help them determine which music elective they'd like to take in fifth grade. So a little recruiting time, getting the band down there for the fourth graders to see what they'd like to play. Mr. Gerton will also visit fourth graders at the elementary to go through the registration process for fifth grade as well. So I don't know if he scheduled that with Mrs. O'Connell yet, but that will be happening. And then band tryouts, and the fifth grader will be hosted at the elementary. So incoming fifth graders, I should say, will be hosted at the elementary. And then sixth through eighth grade registration information will be shared with students as well. Honor roll celebration. On 3-1, the middle school will be celebrating, and students who have made the A or B honor roll for the first or second quarter, approximately 310 students will be recognized. We are also anticipating approximately 190 family members to attend this ceremony. So it's nice to see that family is able to attend as well. Recognition, he'd also like to recognize the PTO for holding a successful bingo fundraiser in January. They netted about $3,000 in profit for that. And again, thank you to the PTO for your ongoing support of our school. And again, thank you to the PTO exec council, which is Jessica Burisma, Katie Jo Danielson, Alicia Holmstrom, and Nikki Huckins. So that's Mr. Gerton's report.
Well, since they're not here to ask questions, we'll just continue.
I can help.
Mr. Hallow. You can make up an answer for them.
That might be kind of fun. Good evening. At the elementary, we've been very busy since the last time I saw you. Last time I was here, I talked about the Royal Roundup, which was up and coming. That happened on February 2nd. As of today, we have 60 families who have already committed to us and registered. Just for context, last year, the first time that we pulled data around registration was on April 7th, and we had 54 families on that day. So we're hoping we're ahead of the curve, and we'll have a lot more registering in coming days. The event was really successful. I heard good feedback around it. We had a number of families there. I'd like to thank the teachers who volunteered, our PTO who put on a parent panel, Mr. Schuler who came, and Mr. Vio who came. And also, we had student council and National Honor Society students who helped watch children so that parents with multiple children could prioritize spending time with just their incoming kindergartner. Lots of fun activities that they rotated through that evening, including riding a school bus, which was a highlight for many, and also a photo booth, which was kind of fun to give them a chance to dress up as a future royal. We also had our royal recognition assembly with our gym wall fixed, so we were able to come together again in the gym as a whole school and have a chat about kindness and empathy and hand out awards for that. So we had over 100 family members who came to celebrate those students who were recognized from their classrooms for exhibiting those skills. Last Monday on the 20th, teachers at the elementary school continued working and reported to school to continue with their letters training and had their final sessions in letters. So our work with that continues now from taking it from theory and making sure that we're putting it into practice and making sure that we're getting those results around that so that we can flip the triangle. Part of our future work that we're just starting to have discussions around is evaluating our master schedule that we use every day as a building to make sure that we have the right number of instructional minutes and where our instructional priorities lie so that we can have those commitments to doing right by kids and making sure that we're getting the best results possible. So we're starting conversations around that for the 23-24 school year and refining our practices. And then, as Katie Brandonberg mentioned, we have our I love to read month that's just wrapping up. Thank you to the PTO for their donations that are enabling a lot of those activities to happen, and of course, to Ms. Brandonberg and our first grade readers who came tonight for lifting that all off the ground. Bigfoot Bill, as Katie mentioned, has been a really big highlight. The kids look for him every day to find where he is. And then because I started putting pictures of it in the morning announcements, if they happen to see you and they have seen it, they will hunt you down and be like, take a picture, take a picture. So their picture gets in the morning announcement. So some ways we have a plethora of pictures that we're just scrolling through of kids, but it's all good and they're really enjoying it. So it's been super fun. Any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Mr. Vio.
Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to give you some information about teaching and learning. A couple of weeks ago, we had a student feedback session with our Impact Lives group and gathering feedback about how, you know, a safe and inclusive environment around the middle school. Got some great feedbacks, had some wonderful kids and some really, really insightful thoughts coming back on that, which was fantastic. And then we'll be having a parent feedback from middle school parents, I believe on March 9th coming up. So we're excited about getting some more feedback. And then they're going to compile everything, put some things together for us and kind of help us with our next action steps towards that safe, belonging, and inclusive environment. Other than that, we started planning for our 23-24 professional development. I'm looking at having more of an individualized approach towards the servicing each building and meeting their needs where they're at. We're kind of at three or four different places along the way with our PLC work and our MTSS works. We're going to try to work to support each of those buildings where they're at, kind of move them towards their next steps in that journey. CLC will be looking about CPI training, about who should be getting CPI trained and when and where. And for those that may not be familiar, that's, I forget what the acronym is about, but it's about how we work with kids to deescalate them and should the need arise, any holes that we might need to put kids in, provided that they're in an unsafe position to either harm themselves or someone else. The elementary will be focusing on maximizing their understanding of the current tools that we have, whether it's Wonders Online tools, the FastBridge, progress monitoring, DreamBox, et cetera, and working towards best practices, particularly in math and English language arts, as we just talked about, finishing up with letters. Middle school, they'll be focusing on continuation of the guiding principles of empathy, listening, harm reduction, clarity, empowerment, but possibly be seeking work with progress monitoring and interventions, resources for tier one, and maybe also looking at PLC work with our math and ELA teams. And high school is looking to move towards implementation of, excuse me, best practices towards aligning our standards and learning targets and our assessments, so they're all in good alignment with that. And to that regard, we have a consultant from Resource Training and Solutions coming out to work with our ELA team on March 15th to map out a high school English language arts unit focusing on the same standards, but then looking at, okay, what does that look like for the rigor of a ninth grader, the rigor of a 10th grader, and the rigor of an 11th grader? And then how can we work towards assessing at each of those levels as well? So we're excited to have that coming forward. And then MCA preparations are underway. Yes, they are. We're working with staff to help them and help us emphasize the importance of getting accurate results out of our kids. We just want our kids to try and get an accurate reflection of where they're at. I'll be working with staff and getting them access to some relatively new resources that MDE is putting out there from retirement, retired questions and how they're aligned to standards and how we can find out, you know, how many types of questions from each of the standards that there are. So we'll kind of get that out to staff here in the next couple of days. I've got training coming up Wednesday morning for proctors, and our first test comes up a week from tomorrow, so it's already starting. Most of the testing will be done in April after break, so.
Awesome.
Hopefully we have a couple coming up. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gronson.
I'm still stuck on Katie's Bigfoot Bill. I have nothing that fun. Why does all like business stuff? Right, so it's for the new board members, every, every spring, February, we start talking about what are our summer plans? So for students who are on IEPs, if they need additional services in the summer and they have to qualify for those services, it's called extended school year services. So it's different than the targeted services that you'll see offered at the elementary and the middle school, for example, where it's students can go if their teachers think they need additional help or their parents think they need help. Students on IEPs have to qualify for extended school year services. So we're starting our planning for that. It will run four weeks this summer, the same as the It will run four weeks this summer, the same as it did last year, and we're doing two weeks in June and two weeks in July. So those were the dates that were chosen. And it does coincide with the same dates for targeted services, at least for those four weeks. It just really helps with busing and staffing and just everything in the schools. So we are starting that work. And then I had mentioned at the beginning of the year, one of the goals that I have for this year is really to do some alignment with what kind of reading curriculum materials our special education staff is using from, you know, kindergarten all the way up to 12th grade. We have a lot of really good materials, but some of it is a little piecemeal, where someone went to a conference and heard about a really great reading instruction, and yes, it is research-based, and then they asked to buy it, and, you know, like, sure, we'll buy it. And then I realized we have multiple different items that are working, and for staff who are newer to our district, it's often hard for them to say, well, which one should I use? Like, if I, you know, if the student's here, but they're having difficulty, where do I go next? So there's a small group that I have pulled together, and we're really working on providing a guiding document so that teachers, special education teachers who are teaching those reading intervention services, will have a nice flow of where they can go if a student's doing really well, where do you go next? Or if they're having, you know, more difficulties, challenges, what is another curriculum or materials I can work with? So the end product, you know, we will be done in a couple of months, I imagine, and then it will be a very nice document moving forward that's all staff can use. That'll be very handy. The special education leadership team is also working on, and actually, we finished it, working on a transition document for what is the process that staff should go through when a student is moving from one building to the next. So our little early childhood students moving into kindergarten, our fourth graders to fifth grade, our eighth graders to ninth grade, what is the process that we would like all teachers to follow? And then also, what are the IEP considerations that need to be changed in the spring, so that when that student walks into the building in the fall, they are set up with the support they need, the appropriate services, and staff aren't scrambling in September saying, I don't know what class they should go into, what kind of service minutes need to be changed, and everybody's doing these crazy amendments at the beginning of the school year. It's just like a definite added stress. So our special ed leadership team encompasses the special ed leads at the building. So we have our preschool, our Jennifer Slipkas at our early childhood. We have Amy Steenison at our elementary, Ashley Tanami Middle School, Amy Manta at the high school, our school psychologist, Jenna Olson, and then our assessment coordinator, Amy Frank, and then, of course, myself. So working on that. And they developed a really good process. We have a really nice document showing what kind of changes need to be made to IEPs in the spring, and then that was presented at, I think it was last week, at our monthly special education meeting. So I have them once a month, and it's a district-wide meeting. We do it, I mean, virtual meetings are great. No one has to take time to drive somewhere. So that, I think, will really be helpful for staff, so that fall is a little more peaceful and things feel in place. And then we are currently in, MDE does compliance checks with special education paperwork. If you've been on the board a long time, it used to be on this five-year rotation, and you'd be given like 50, 100 student files to review, and it was just incredibly overwhelming. And two years ago, they changed it where instead, every year, they give you between five and 10 student files to review, and you have to look at very specific things. So I'm in the middle of doing a file review for MDE compliance, and so far, so good. I haven't found anyone out of compliance, you know, they're not throwing us into IEP jail or anything. I'm not all done, but, you know, I'm hopeful. So that's a little bit what's going on with special ed right now. Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Speaking of Mrs. Gronseth, you may have seen in my email that she is leaving us at the end of June. She is transitioning to the Lassure Henderson District via Southwest Metro. So we're sad to see her move on and want to thank her for her time. Well, plenty of time to do that before the end of the year, but I just want to note that we are in the process of transitioning and working through that hiring process. So just to give you an update on that, I am meeting with all the special ed teams at each building just to get a feel for what type of special ed director that they're looking for in our next candidate. So I'll be collecting that data over the next few weeks with the hope of posting the position on March 10th. The other thing working on behind the scenes is the actual job description. So as we mentioned, Deanna is hired through Southwest Metro, so they held the job description, they held the contract. We're flipping that, we're taking on the contract and moving forward with this role. So there'll be a little bit more ownership from the district in that and a little bit more maybe creativity, if you will, in terms of the job description. So I'm working with their admin staff on putting that together and just, you know, again, what does that look like as we put out the posting here soon? Again, we're hoping we'll get some great candidates for that role, and we look to, let's double check here, to have narrowed that down to about five or six candidates to do interviews on April 4th, the first round, with the second round with the finalists on April 12th. I'll probably be asking one of the board members to sit in on one of those final interview rounds, just so you can get some feedback, give some feedback as well. So that is the timeline with the hope of bringing it to the April board meeting for approval of our new candidate to fulfill the special ed director role. Also, just wanted to note, we've had a few snow days here recently, if you may have seen. We are wrapped up with our five flex days, so just to make sure we're clear on that, there has been a lot of talk amongst districts in the state of will we get an extension of those, and that is not going to happen. It is a state statute that is not going to be changed at this point, and the governor is not in the mode of being able to change that either. So five days are over. We had our sixth day, and you saw in our diagram, that was the Teachers Professional Development Day, which we'll be making up at the end of the school year with teachers. There'll be no student contact on that day. Again, we'll have one more day if that is the case of a Teacher Professional Development Day. So thank you. Yeah. So again, it's been an interesting winter, and we thank parents for their patience on some of these days. And I just want to make a shout-out, especially for today. We've had a pretty stressful day with bus drivers coming in. I know Mr. Cook called me, what, three times today to confirm a few things, and, you know, I think gravel roads were the thing this morning that we didn't anticipate being as slippery as they were. And, you know, the drivers did a heck of a job getting kids to school safely. There were some areas that they could not get to this morning. I think this afternoon, they got to just about every driveway to drop kids off, but that was a fear this morning as we were trying to communicate out to parents, saying, hey, we just can't get to your driveway. Literally, buses are either they can't go down the hill or they can't make it up, you know, on a gravel road. So, you know, there is a large percentage of our population that lives on gravel roads, so it's a tough balance, you know? And I think that's what sometimes people don't understand, is that, you know, the city roads are fine, you know? You drove around town at 7:00 this morning, and there was no ice on the roads. Well, it doesn't look the same way out in the country. So again, just want to thank the drivers for really hanging in there. I know it was a stressful, stressful day, both AM and PM routes, so. And then lastly, I just want to, again, thank the board for the opportunity to go to the national convention here a week or two ago. Just a really cool opportunity for my own professional development. We were kind of shut down for a while through COVID for doing anything in terms of getting out and taking advantage of some really high-end professional development. It's fun to see, you know, leaders from all across the country, school district leaders, and what they have to offer, and some of the stories that they have to share, and great sessions. And I kind of took the track, and I think I shared this in my Friday update of just the MTSS initiatives, the strategic planning initiatives, were two of my focus areas that I was able to pull some really good information on how to bring that forth in your districts and really make that more of a standout document that everybody's buying into. So that was really helpful. And again, just some really high-level folks. One of the Minnesota superintendents, Matt Hillman from Northfield, was a finalist for Superintendent of the Year, which is really neat. We were able to have breakfast with Matt and kind of celebrate that acknowledgement. And unfortunately, he didn't make it to the finals. New York, of all places, beat out Minnesota, so you can imagine, that seems like happens in football and everything else. We're all jokes. But Matt's an outstanding superintendent, does a great job in Northfield. So thanks again for that opportunity. Appreciate that. That's all I have. Any other questions?
Isn't Darren finalist for Superintendent of the Year here?
Why?
Yeah, he's a finalist there, yeah.
Is there a plaque for that?
Just don't finish second.
We got a flag.
That'd be a concern.
Any further questions for Darren? All righty. Moving on to board member reports, anybody have anything to speak on from a committee perspective?
Personnel committee has four negotiation sessions scheduled with the teachers' union, district office, TLC, March 2nd, 6th, 14th, and 16th, all from 3:30 to 5:30. They're not necessarily public meetings, but we do need to announce them. We're having them.
And is that something that for all the negotiations, we have to make the dates public, whether it's teachers, parents? It's literally sitting on the table. So I know that that's going to change, so. Anybody else?
What do we do if we schedule one in between a board meeting, we don't have an opportunity to announce it at a board meeting? Is that something we can announce on the website?
I think so. Yeah, we have that ability to do that. Yep, perfect. This just gives a more public viewpoint of here and the dates, so.
Perfect.
Anything else?
Our meeting was canceled, so.
Hearing that and knowing we have a concert?
It's too late, I missed it.
Oh. Me, too. That's okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Behrens, second by Ms. Schultz. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. If aye, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:20 AM.